Okay, so it's six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the public hearing on the two petition warrant articles that require a public hearing by law. So tonight, we had a meeting on Monday night in the town of Woodstock for the same purpose. Tonight is the town Lincoln's turn to hear and be heard about the two petition warrant articles. They are petition warrant articles. They're not proposed by the board, but the board is required to hold the hearing. So that's what we're doing. We're going to do, what we're going to do tonight is similar to what we did in Woodstock, which is for each one. And I actually apologize if it brought my attention that we didn't really follow the procedure on the second warrant article. But we'll have a representative, and I think Mr. Sherduan is prepared to make remarks about, from the perspective of the petitioners regarding the articles. And then before we open for public to comment or ask questions, those comments and questions will be limited to three minutes per person. So the first article is Article 17, it was a petition article. Shall we adopt provisions of RSA 32:5-B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal year's actual amount of local taxes raised by more than 4%? This petition warrant article proposes the school board and budget committee will be limited to raising the budget for the rural cooperative school district to no more than 4% from the previous year. This warrant must be voted using secret ballot. The polls open for a minimum of one hour. It's going to be not on the actual normal voting ticket that you're going to see during the day. So if you want to vote on this, you can come to the meeting. And it requires a three-fifths majority. So the tax cap would be in effect for the next fiscal year if it is approved by the three-fifths majority. The, so the rest of that information, that's just basically what I already covered. So I guess we'll start. Mr. Sherduan, you prepared to make remarks? Is there any other person that, from the petitioners' sort of perspective, that wanted to make remarks? So pull up in the podium, Mr. Sherduan.
Great, thank you, Jerry. So basically, the reason for this tax cap petition, which other towns are doing. Last year, when we had the school budget board, was voted down by voters 107 to 103. So there's a four-point, there's a four-vote difference. And I think even some members of this school board didn't really see it necessary to eliminate the school budget board. Anyways, so that eliminated our traditional check and balance to the budget. And that's what this tax cap was, is meant to do, put some guide rails. And 4%, as noted in the last meeting, since you didn't know, it's, our budget isn't really going up that much. But 4% will put some guide rails onto what we're doing. Even though the budget hadn't gone up much, you should know that the budget, the student population was about 400. And I think the student population right now is about 273, somewhere around there. And we're also about 60% higher than the state average. Okay, so 4% from what was discussed last week in Woodstock would have almost no effect on it right now. In the future generations, since we don't have a school budget board, this would restrain that from happening. And the thing is, you got to remember is that a lot of people in this community are on fixed incomes. And, you know, and, you know, the state, the taxes go up, and their social security does not, you know. So it's, it is, it is a burden on these people. And then, you know, as pointed out, last year by the school budget board, there are areas to make cuts in the budget as it is. I remember one of the members of the school budget board put up a big grid, and they had all the classes and all the teachers. And just by moving the grids around, we're able to get some extra personnel time. Now, whether you want to use that personnel time in the actual budget, or maybe save money down the line by getting some tutoring to some of these students, because there's 75% failure rate in the seventh grade. And these seventh graders were also the people who had, two years ago, they got 83% failure rate in science. And of course, in the high school, the state test has 75% failure rate again in math and about the same in science. So there's plenty of resources already available from here to the foreseeable future. Those resources can be better used, I think, to help with these test scores and to help our students. And, and I think the voters, again, the petition we submitted, got, for the school budget board, was about 50 signatures. And everyone I talked to was willing to sign it. I just stopped at 50. I only need 25. I probably could have gotten 75, or even more time, probably 100, probably 103 voters wanted it in the first place. So this is something that is definitely wanted by the voters, something, some sort of check and balance. Also on the petition, I do have reinstatement of the school board. So that's another way of doing it as well. What's that? Budget, budget committee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So just by way of providing some additional information about sort of the impacts, potential impacts of the proposed article. The article reads as if, as if that it would act as a, essentially a budget cap on the, on the school board. But it's not quite that straightforward. The article proposes to, the actual verbiage of the article proposes that the school board budget committee would be limited to raising the rural cooperative school board budget by no more than 4%. And that's not, that's not exactly how the statute works. Essentially, it's a bit more complex, particularly in the towns where we have sort of a differing appropriation of obligations for raising the budget by, from taxes. So Lincoln's budget may not go up as much as Woodstock's, or the percentage may not go up as much as Woodstock's. So there's some, a little bit of complications. But the idea is that the budget committee, or the school board, or whoever's crafting the budget for the district, be limited to raising the, or would be limited to crafting a budget for the school that would not raise taxes in the towns by more than 4%. So it's not a 4% tax cap on the school. It's a 4% or 4% budget cap on the school. It's a 4% tax cap on the town's tax rate, which complicates things a little bit. And some of the, and just a quick example of how that, how that may be, that may actually cause some issues for the school. So, for example, if the school district has some property that it choose, that we choose to dispose of for some reason, if we have excess property or a building or something, or vehicles that we choose to get rid of. That, that amount of money is going to offset in the current budget year. So when we craft our budget for that year, we'll take into consideration that we're going to have substantial income from the sale of property or the sale of assets. What that means is the towns are not going to have to raise as much money in taxes next year for the school. So then the next, when we, when we go to the next year and we're trying to craft a budget, that 4% is looking back at a year that is artificially low because of the sale of that equipment. And so we may not even be able to maintain a flatline budget if, if it raises the amount raised by taxes by the little 4%. So there's situations where, that can arise where the tax cap could limit the district from even maintaining a flatline budget. But, and it's just because of sort of the additional complications of, of the way that the towns split up the, the fund. That, the 4% tax cap is not, would not apply to amendments made by the public at the district meeting. And, and so if we were to craft a budget or the budget committee, if it's reinstated, crafts a budget that is within the 4% limit, the townspeople could amend that to increase it above the 4% limit at the, at the district meeting. So that is sort of a, one thing to consider as well. Is that everything done? I think the main considerations is that the 4% cap could potentially, could have the potential in, in years where we, where the school sees significant incomes or significant revenues that we may be hampered in the next budget session to keep to that 4% tax cap while maintaining even a flat budget. I think another sort of more recent example, or sort of more tangible example, is we've received quite a bit of funding through Esther Grants and through COVID relief funding that have offset parts of our budget. That if, you know, if we were to look at what the amount of money that we're asking the towns to raise in taxes, you know, that may be artificially low, say, this year or last year because of the offset revenue from, that we're getting from these federal grant programs. And then when we go to the, to the budget session for the next year, we're looking at having to stick within a 4% range of an artificially low budget, which could hamper our ability to deliver the necessary services. That's sort of nutshell of some of the pitfalls of, of the cap and the way that it's been proposed. Is there any other public comments about that issue? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the second. The second warrant article, Article 18, it was a petition warrant article again, and again, requires the public hearing we're having this evening. It's increased voter participation by changing Lincoln and Woodstock to an SB2 district, so elections happen in November where turnout is substantially higher. So, Mr. Sherduan, if you want to address that.
Yeah, sure. Just, this just moves, and there's, just for your information, there is a move in the state legislature to move these, all these elections to November. That hasn't happened yet, but that, that could be on the horizon. I'm a big fan of the town hall meeting and that we had yesterday, and I think there was some good input there. I think it'd be a lot easier for voters to have the school meeting there as well when we do the town hall. And, you know, there'd be a lot less confusion. Like, this year and last year, it got moved. I know it wasn't nefarious that we moved the, the voting, but it did get moved. And, for example, the Woodstock website still has March, yeah, March 15th on the calendar for the vote. And when you move these meetings, it inadvertently suppresses the vote. Absolutely. So I want to give everyone the ability to vote at a time that they're aware of, you know. And also, a little anecdotally, I mean, we have the vote from 2:00 to 6:00, which is, there's no morning session for the vote. So if you're working or commuting, you can only attend the 6:00 PM slot, maybe if you can get back in time or your work permit. And really dipping into the weeds here, me personally, I mean, we have the, that day off from school. So, you know, the kids have a free day. That doesn't help me vote. You know, I have to take care of my kids now. I got three kids I got to take care of. And, you know, it's kind of a circus to run down and vote. I'd much rather, I don't, I don't mind the day off, but, you know, having to vote at the same time is ungood. So this would additionally give us the ability, which we don't have now, of absentee ballots. And that is very good for our aging population. So there's ice and snow. And it also gives you those commuters and parents the time to plan and be able to vote. So, you know, this would increase our voter participation as well. That's it.
Thank you. So again, I'll provide a little bit, a little bit of information as to what the proposed warrant article will do. Currently, our system is set up very similar to how the towns operate. Everybody shows up on a particular night. We all go through the warrant articles together. There's discussion at that meeting, and then those are voted on at that, at that time. So elected officials, that is done by ballot, by, by official ballot, that is also done on the same night. So as it stands now, we have official ballot for elected officials absentee voting. But if you want to vote on the actual warrant articles, you have to be, you have to come in person. So there is no, as Mr. Sherduan said, there is no absentee ballot for those particular warrant articles. What, what changing to what they call an SB2 district, or an SB2 entity, would do is we eliminate our town hall style district meeting. So we would no longer have the meeting where we would go, where we would come, talk about the warrant articles and vote on them at that night. What, what would happen is that meeting would essentially be bifurcated into two separate meetings. There would be a deliberative session that would occur in February where all of the articles and the budget would have to be prepared in advance. And it, and the folks would come and amendments could be made to the articles at that time. Once that meeting closes, or once that portion of the meeting closes, that becomes the official ballot. And all of those warrant articles, as amended, would then be put onto a official ballot that is voted on, just like you would vote on, you know, federal elections. You come, you check the boxes, and then you go home, and there's no district meeting. So there's, that's the major change. The warrant article is worded such that the elections would happen in November, but as it currently stands, the law does not allow for that. We currently have a March meeting set up. So unless we were to change it to either a May or, or April or May meeting, it would remain in March. Those in April, May, sorry, March, April, May are the only allowable meetings under the statute at this time. So it would not move anything to November currently, although it, it sounds as though there may be some legislation on the horizon. But as it stands right now, the meeting would, or the voting on the, the issues would stay in March, and that official ballot vote would happen in March. But like I said, the biggest, the biggest impact that the folks would see is that it would eliminate our sort of traditional town hall style meeting, where everyone that's interested comes together, talks about the, talks about the articles, and then gets an opportunity to say their piece, and then the vote's taken and the decision made on the night of the meeting. So it sort of changes that to a bit of a different, a bit of a different plan. So is there anyone that has any comment on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Paul, do you know the bill that's out there for the voting in November?
I know the representative who's in truce, but I don't know.
It just, with the schools, and we have contract negotiations and bond hearings. I don't know how you could get all that stuff done in a month into the school year.
I could get contact, you know.
Yeah, curious to.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, that will conclude our public hearing regarding the two warrant articles. And we will adjourn that portion of the meeting. We will open our regularly scheduled, and thank you all for coming as well. And we'll open our regularly scheduled school board meeting.
You're all welcome to stay. Absolutely. No, you can stay.
Okay. Okay, good.
Riveting. March 24th is the end.
Yes, and, and just so everybody's clear, March 24th is the, is going to be. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the budget hearing minutes of February 9th, 2022. I will, a, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Tammy. Desmond, is there any further discussion about those minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the budget minutes of February 9th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those staying? And that motion carries. Next up is the approval of the school board minutes of February 9th. So that was the budget hearing and now the school board minutes of February 9th. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on those minutes? All those in favor approving those minutes, signify by saying aye. Opposed and abstentions? And that motion carried. Next up, approval of the school board minutes of March 6th, so that would have been Sundays. Is that right? I did have, oh, sorry, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you. Thank you. And I did have one comment, I think, my recollection maybe may not be good, but is that Joe made the motion and I seconded it. And I think you have it in there as I made the motion, Joe seconded it. Does anyone else remember? Joe, do you remember? Right here.
You've got 100% sure that I believe it.
I'm, yeah.
I think I made the motion.
I think Joe made the motion, yeah. And then I seconded, so you could just switch that around. So all those in favor of approving those minutes with that correction, signify by saying aye. Opposed and abstentions?
Staying.
Thank you. And that carries. That brings us to correspondence and.
We have another set of minutes.
Oh, we do?
March 7.
Oh, March 7th, right. The public hearing from the, from Woodstock. Okay, so I will, I can motion to approve the minutes from March 7th, public hearing in Woodstock.
So.
Thank you, Tammy.
Second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any comments on those?
No.
Any?
Way to go, getting them all done, too. That was a lot.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from the March 7th public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed and those abstaining?
Staying.
Thank you. That motion carries. So we will move on to correspondence. We did, we did just get an email.
Yes.
That, or I, I just got it, but we got one today that is Mr. Sherduan's email regarding the release of the most recent test scores. And I think we're going to, you're going to address that.
Yes.
Okay. Is that satisfactory at this point?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Business administration report.
Well, there's stuff later in the meeting that we'll get to, but there are the best.
Okay, I just wanted to remind you that the NCS letter is in your packet. And that the seniors would like to discuss the senior class group proposal when they arrive.
I was gonna say, yeah. I haven't seen it. Maybe they were thinking of starting with her. Did you want to do your report now, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Thank you.
Okay, we're busy week. We do have the March 24th meeting of that, the school district meeting. That will be held on the gymnasium, just. The next board meeting with the new board will be April 6th. And the reason why I say that is because typically you've got a second and fourth Wednesday, and this is the first Wednesday. But we have to get a board meeting in before April 15th. So the first Wednesday, we'll be having April 6th meeting. Oh, see, then there are some policies that we're going to be looking at for first reading and some to withdraw and one for a second reading. So I just documented those for you, and the rest we can do with continuing business.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. President.
So I can say thank you to our custodians, professionals and teachers. And they're working really hard for students to learn and in taking pride in the school and the commitment to it. So I thank them for that. Winter carnival was moved to the Monday following spring, following winter break, and it was excellent. It was such a great week to have the kids come back from there, and we just had a really good turnout and sportsmanship and teamwork camaraderie. That's kind of what you expect when you look at life skills with students and how they behave with each other and how they can take upon tasks and do so well with them. I just shout out to all those kids. They did a wonderful job. Congratulations to our boys and girls ski teams for a great year, and the middle schools as well. They did really, really well. And to Andrew Wilson and McKenna Mac for representing our school distinction at the state tournaments and beyond. And then to our boys basketball team to have made it to the second round of the NHL playoffs. And we found out that Ken Claire Knapp was named to the grand state all conference. And, and also the New Hampshire Basketball Coaches Association second team. And Jay Avery also received some honorable mentions. So it was really nice. I want to, students and staff are thankful for the opportunity to see their faces. So we had a discussion about masks this, these past couple of days. And it was just really interesting to, to see, I mean, even though I'm in there with kids at lunchtime, and we don't necessarily see them all the time. But when you, and you look at somebody, you're like, holy cow, how did you? So, you know, and one teacher came up to me today and said, you know, I didn't really understand, you know, what this child was facing while this was happening, because I knew there was something going on with their learning, such as like a speech problem. And, and they're like, it was really pronounced, and we were able to take that off and be able to identify some of the other needs that the kids need. So they're, they're really appreciative and yet compassionate towards each other, and those choose to do what they want. So I think it was a great move. Thank you. And then we have a delay in our progress reports. They were supposed to go out and do the second, or due to the snowstorm and vacation, look for the progress reports for the third quarter to come out tomorrow. They should be just about done and waiting for, there was a glitch with study halls. We don't report study halls. It's great. So there was a glitch in that. They should be out tomorrow. The high school will have a guest speaker tomorrow, another local guest speaker. And we decided to have Tracy Schamber come and talk about community service and substance dependencies. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for kids to interact with her. She's going to be wonderful. And then lately, our, our teachers have been doing, like an in-service day was dedicated to our annual, like suicide prevention training and to have students to get, to recognize that thing, recognize those needs. Also, News ELA or News Ella, some people have, we have a, a training which focused on differentiation, which is awesome. If you're not familiar with the program, I think we talked about it a little bit, but it helps teachers build reading materials for kids who are at different levels, but yet can understand the same concepts. So I could have, I could have like a physics lesson that I'd be giving to, let's say it's a sixth grade physics lesson. I could be giving to kids who are really struggling learners and really accelerated learners. And yet their articles would be a little bit different. They'd still understand the same concepts behind it. So it's a tremendous asset. Our kid teachers are using that to provide differentiation for, for our students as we speak. So I think it's a really, really excellent tool, and that's just happening out there. That's.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot. And then News Ella, that was, we did have, I think we'd had a pretty extensive discussion of, yeah, budget level on that episode because of the, the value that the, we folks see in it. So it's great. Next up is committee reports. I don't know, other than the policy committee.
Yeah, there is no.
No other committee reports. Okay. So we have a lot to go through with regards to the policy committee. A lot of firsts and one second.
Yes.
You want to do that?
Sure. I'm assuming everybody read through a lot of policies. You did, Joe. You read every one of them? Good. And just, does anybody have any comments or questions? Did we have the final draft of the one that was held over for second reading?
It is in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, but that specifically, because we have, we have that one that we held over to make some momentum.
Thank you for that.
But then in, in first reading, we also have J I C R, which is essentially the same thing, but different.
Right.
So.
Policy and then a procedure, and we added the same comment to the procedure that.
I did see that that had been changed. And so the procedure is. Are we, is, is R the purported procedure? Yes, J I H, sorry, not J S.
J I H, just the other one, second reading.
Yeah. So J I H R, I think was the one that, that, it's just like the same.
Right.
Policy.
But not with the corrections or the corrections.
It does actually still have the same corrections. Yes. So as far as I could tell, reading through, our two corrections were that we wanted to make sure that there was always two people present per search.
Correct.
And that there was, and that.
Every.
Every time we were going to try the force. every time we were gonna try the force searching to contact parents.
Unless it was.
Right, a threat to school safety, right, so, so J H R is here, I do believe that the same language was incorporated, as I read it, it sounded like. Yeah, paragraph A, in addition to the person conducting the search, at least one authorized person shall be present, so, and then the other thing was absent him in effect, every attempt will be made to contact the student's parents or guardian prior to conducting a search, so they, they comport it from that perspective. I was just, I guess my question was why we need both of them? Do we need both of them?
The letter A.
For, for J I H R and J I H.
It looks, is J I H R replacing?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, they're pretty much mirror each other.
Yeah.
There's the New Hampshire School Board Association policy.
Yeah.
One is in the policy section and one is in the appendix.
It seems like H is.
Receiver.
Yeah, so they're both in. Just the way they categorize them.
Yeah. New Hampshire School Board Association.
Yeah. Manual, as long as they're like, saying the same things, I'm sorry.
It seems more like people involved in actions. H and R's, like.
The process.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, like, is there a way to just put it together, so there's one place to find them?
Well, sometimes they, they're required to be in two sections.
I didn't notice any inconsistency between the two, so that was which is what I was looking for, I just, and I know that there's, these policies are all over the place, as far as, like, there's copies in different spots, but so I guess with respect to the content of it, I think my concerns will have been addressed last week, I just, my only question was why there was two, and that seems to be answered.
Did anyone else have any other questions or concerns with any of the other policies?
One other, in the graduation requirements, we're adding sort of more definitions to the community service department. One of the things is fundraising activities will not be approved or counted towards requirement. And I, I can sort of just envision, I know that the, the, like, the Rotary does a considerable amount of fundraising, and they do things, you know, like, I think they do like the duck race and stuff, and if the kids help out with that, isn't that something that they should get credit for, but that's a fundraising activity.
But that's not a school fundraising activity.
Well, it doesn't say school. I'm looking at E, paragraph E, and it's just like the second, the second report.
Okay, I, I think fundraising activities is actually fundraising for something, opposed to supporting and event, is task of fundraising.
Okay, I mean, as long as that's the understanding, I, I, you know, a lot of what those sort of chariors they should do is fundraising related, I don't, the friends are active, the tank of time, the kids can't tell with that, because it's a fundraiser.
So maybe we should identify it as a class fundraising. It is, the objective, the attention is there, the, the freshman class decides to sell cookie dough, and while they're selling cookie dough, those are not volunteer hours, because they're fundraising. If during homecoming, that, those are not community service hours, they're fundraising.
But if they, if a group of students decided to raise money to support the bridge project.
That is a community service.
Okay, so.
Class fundraising.
I, I mean, and there's some, they're, they're pre-approval requirements anyway, so there's some oversight, but I guess from you know, I could see if, if the organization is organizing the fundraiser and the kids are just helping, that's one thing.
They're not profiting from it.
Right, right, and the kids aren't in the, in the, and the organization isn't, it's a, you know, nonprofit, but I'm thinking does that extend to, you know, say the, some kids want to do a fundraiser for some organization, and they organize the fundraiser, do it themselves, are we gonna call that?
Like, turn, turn funds over.
Right.
Because I don't think, like, I think we might interact, we have a large group of kids who are involved and interact, they might do some fundraising for that, we just so they might do some fundraising for them, it's not to benefit themselves, it's to benefit others, so I do, I do that as community service.
Right, that's what Kevin just said, if you do a fundraiser and give the money to the bridge project.
I also think.
That's community service.
The spirit of community service is actually going out there. Not necessarily program, it's participating with another entity to support them, whether that's building something or writing something. That's true.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe if we could, I guess it's pretty, it's sort of like fundraising activities will not be approved, so if we are gonna approve some of those.
How about we put class fundraising? Class fundraising activities.
Okay.
And then that, if they're fundraising for their own class, it's not a community service, if they're fundraising for a nonprofit or local league, that's. That's a good catch.
Is that something that we could move to second reading with that amendment?
Absolutely.
Or that, all right, that's not up for. I.
You happy with that?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
There was one other one that I had, that I had a thought on, but I don't think it was anything. The assignment of students to classes, are we talking about, like, in this one, who's gonna be in Mrs. Pamlin's kindergarten class, Mrs. Susan's Boden's kindergarten class, or are we just talking about, like, when a kid, like, where a kid is gonna go?
You're not talking about me personally, or what kids get for, usually it has to do with, are they gonna be located in which grade level, because we'll get them to the high school, come in, bring transcripts with them and say, hey, we've completed the ninth grade, but yet those things don't satisfy our criteria for ninth grade, so we might say, no, you're eighth grade, well, I'll use ninth.
Or vice versa.
Yeah.
They might have completed ninth grade, but are at a tenth grade level here.
Yeah.
Yeah. For instance, we have another child that just came to school today, or enrolled today, so Ginny will determine, because they're in elementary school, she'll determine which class they're in.
Great.
And I'm just, the reason I ask is because we've gone from the building principal or his visitor designated to a whole bunch of people.
Yeah.
And, you know, some of, for, for, I think for a lot of the, you know, the normal class assignments, that's probably not necessary, but it's under the policy would be required, you know, that, that we're looping in the principal, the guidance department, and the student's parents to determine whether or not, you know, which, which half of this third grade they're gonna end of it, you know, so.
We, you do end up doing a team approach, especially if people are new to the community, and you have this. I'd like to make a motion to move.
Are we good?
Yes.
I K F dash R, I M B, I M B A, J E B A, J G, J I C C dash R, J I H dash R, J I H D, J I J, J K A, J K B, J L C F A, J L C K, J L D, to second reading.
Second.
Thank you. And any further discussion on that motion? Hearing now, I, all those in favor of moving those policies to second reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed. And abstentions, and I motion carries.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, for the next two as well.
Make a motion to withdraw J I C B.
Second.
Thank you, and any further discussion on that? Actually, we haven't had any discussion on that, but it is a heading discussion. All those in favor of withdrawing J I C B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstentions, and I motion carries. And the last.
Make a motion to move J I H to second reading.
Thank you for having me.
It's on second reading, motion to approve.
To approve J I H.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Thank you. And any further discussion on that? If I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed and abstentions. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
So, staff nominations, recommendations, resignations?
Recommendations, Cindy Bartlett, assistant coach varsity girls softball. Just to let you know.
And is it?
I do resignations.
Okay.
We need to go through them one by one, resignation for Virginia Everett. Oh, a resignation for Anika Varr, and a resignation for Kelsey Bosom.
Make a motion that we accept Virginia Everett's resignation with regret.
Second, thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed and abstentions. And.
I'll make a motion that we accept Anika Vard's resignation with regret. Lots of regret. Second.
Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Jasmine, any further discussion on that? And hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. The abstentions.
I'll make a motion, we accept Kelsey Boden's resignation with regret.
Thank you, Joe, any further discussion of that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, aye, all those opposed. And abstentions.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, that's rough.
Yeah, we'd like to thank Ms. Everett and Ms. Varr and Ms. Boden for their service to the district, and Ms. Everett, and then Ms. Varr has been here for quite some time, Ms. Boden was fairly new, but she was well liked, so.
And she was a alumna.
And an alumni, true. New business, doesn't, nothing on the agenda for new business, continuing business is, of course, the senior class trip.
All right, hi, everyone, I am Andrew Wilson, president of the senior class, this is Sienna Mack, vice president of the senior class, we wanted to propose our class trip to Lake George, New York, as, as we all know, the past few years have been completely crazy, nothing has been predictable, so we've had quite a few ideas, and this is sort of what we landed on. And we were really excited to hopefully go to New York City for a while, but due to a number of reasons, we realized it's not really feasible between cost, vaccination requirements, and a couple of other things, just wasn't really realistic, so we proposed this trip to, it's in Queensberry, New York, Lake George, the class, it was met with a lot of enthusiasm, so that is what we would like to put forth. As far as chaperones go, we have Sarah Craft, Katie Mack, Jeff Wilson, and Logan Placy, all committed as chaperones, and Ed Wargo as a possible alternate. As far as funds go, we estimate this trip would cost about $10,000, about $6,000 of that would be spent on the hotel theme park, and about $4,000 on renting a motor coach, and we have just over $11,000 in the bank, of course, our fundraising has been pretty disrupted with COVID. Homecoming was our only fundraiser sophomore year, and flocking was our only fundraiser junior year, that said, we were able to raise $11,000, so I think we're in pretty good shape on that front. Yep.
So, for our hopeful and agenda, we would, in a perfect world, we'd like to leave Friday, May 20th, possibly for a half day. And then, so we would like to depart from school at 12:00 PM, and then we would take a motor coach, we're taking, I think it's called Premier Motor Coach Company out of Vermont, and so then we would drive down, not directly to the Six Flags and Hotel, but Fort William Henry, which is part of our educational piece to the trip. It's a fort that was used during the French and Indian War, and we're gonna be taking a 45-minute haunted tour, and then thankfully, the fort is only eight minutes away from the hotel, so we're just zipping on over to the hotel around 6:00 PM, checking in, getting settled, going to the water park, just kind of staying there for the night. Then wake up Saturday, have breakfast at the hotel, the, the amusement park, Six Flags, doesn't open till 11:00 AM, so we kind of just hang out, maybe we can sleep in, head to Six Flags, spend the day there, and then head back to the hotel room, hotels, have dinner there, go to the water park. And then for Sunday, same thing, wake up, breakfast at the hotel, go to Six Flags, and we'd like to spend from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Six Flags, then depart from Six Flags, and then, so leave on the motor coach, same one, and stop somewhere around 5:00 or 6:00 PM for dinner, and then arrive back at school at 8:00 PM.
And do we have any questions?
How many students are going?
We have just about 100%.
It's not, how many students? I wanna say students, 18 or 19, we're kind of.
That's in the class, 16.
16 or 18. Fantastic.
Just about everyone who had it as an option is really enthusiastic, no one's really against the idea.
Fantastic. Sounds awesome. I'll make a motion, we approve the scenic class trip as presented, second.
Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, have a great time, take pictures.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wear sunscreen.
Do we have any, next up, continuing businesses, COVID-19. Anything there, answer funds?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So, next up is the annual district meeting, sort of assignment of duties. Okay. Oh, great. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome, I, this is fairly new with the school board, it's something I do with the Lincoln Select, and it gives us a chance to go over the warrant articles, prepare for each and every warrant article, who might speak on that article, if you know that you want to make a presentation on an article, it's helpful for me to know that ahead of time, so I can just read the article and then say, I'll recognize so and so. My rules this year that I had for last night at town meeting worked very well, it was masks are recommended, some people wore them, some people didn't, in the gymnasium, half the room was set up with chairs that were paired and socially distanced, the other half were set up in auditorium style, and people also eat with bleachers, and that seemed to work well for everybody, and when it was time to vote, we had a couple of secret ballot votes, I asked those that wanted to vote with lighter crowds to wait towards the end, and it made it clear that it was last column, they should go then, so I think we'll keep all of that very similar, or exactly the same. Traditionally, when somebody wants to speak about an article, whoever's speaking first, I allow 10 minutes to speak, and then everybody in debate would have three minutes, I am gonna reduce that to five, there are eight petition articles, and I think if we give everybody 10 minutes, we're gonna be looking at over two hours of presentations on articles between, ones that you need to present, and all of those eight is well over two hours of.
Never mind discussion.
So, five minutes to present, and then we can take time to discuss them, and then three minutes of those discussions back and forth, but that initial presentation, I think we need to trim back a little bit, other than that, the same rules that we've had in the past. And so, article one and two are all during the day, of course, and then article three, usually we just like to have somebody make a motion to accept them as written, and not actually hear all the reports during the meeting, so if somebody would be prepared for moving to accept them as written in a second, that would be fine with me.
I can make that motion.
Great, thank you, article four is pretty cut and dry, article five we get to is the budget.
Jay, you have the budget, correct?
And I assume you'll make a presentation?
But, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think in the same way that would normally be done by the budget committee, we'll make a presentation about. Yeah, well, I think in the same way that would normally be done by the budget committee, we'll make a presentation about. How it was crafted and some of the, you know, big ticket items that are in there, so that folks have an idea of what's going on.
And that five minutes is good with you, that change?
Yeah, I, so, you know, I, we can get through the, the bullet points in five minutes, and then people have questions.
Right, perfect, is, one thing that I strive for is fair, so if I'm gonna cut a petitioner off at five minutes, I'm also gonna cut you off at five minutes, so.
I understand.
Let's make sure we're all on the same page.
He definitely does that.
I don't wanna talk more.
Yeah.
I'm a small.
It really is.
But then you get that card in front of you that says one minute left, I mean, like, oh no.
It's funny, and then last night somebody said, if I've been talking for one minute, or like one minute left. It's like, no, you've been going on. Article six.
Um, do you want me to present that?
Yeah, you or Jasmine move.
That's you.
Which one was it?
Number six, the faculty party.
Um, if you're doing others, I'll do that one. I'm sure you have to do others.
Go ahead.
And would you like, so again, are we?
You can recognize.
Who's gonna be prepared, or who's actually gonna be recognized to speak?
Recognize Jasmine, Brian, six.
I mean, some of these, some of these, we don't necessarily need to make a presentation on.
Exactly.
Unless there's a question.
Right, and so that's when it comes down to, when somebody says, I have a question about article nine, and each school board member looks at each other, it's nice to say, oh, I'm taking nine, I've got to be prepared.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
On article seven, I'll make a motion to pass over if six is approved.
Right.
And somebody will second that, I'm sure.
Yes.
And article eight.
Is that you, Brian?
That's me.
That's Brian.
Do you think that we'll need, yeah, okay, just the questions on it.
Just questions, you don't wanna present anything?
It's been, I mean, as short as I can say that it's, we've been doing the same thing for 10 years.
Is, and what year are we in this, though?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could give like a short. The same thing I said when we talked about it.
Some of those articles, history's done that, so it will be out there, so people.
No, I'll do that, so yeah, just recognize.
You got it.
Yeah, just a short, we're in year eight of 10 or something, is that right? I don't know, whatever it is, seven, seven of 10.
And I was just talking to Kristen Burford yesterday, you pronounce your last name Angela Lee.
Different sense of family, but yeah, Kristen picked it up on it.
Okay, I, I, I will go by what you say. Article nine.
So I, I will do all of the, there's a couple. There's a couple of the special education ones in there that I think are gonna need some explanation because.
So you want, you want nine, 10, and 11?
Nine, 10, right?
Oh, nine, 10, sorry.
Nine, 10, yeah.
Sure, and if they're related enough, sometimes you might even just speak to both of them, even though we both separately.
I probably will, and, and I'll, I'll be sort of giving a little preface of that, because part, part of the budget has been significantly changed because of some of the special education needs, and that necessitated some of these articles, so, and maybe, there's a little bit of an interplay there, so. And article 11.
The, the rest of them, do we just ask someone for questions and not do any presentation?
Yes.
So article 11, Brian, if there's any questions, you can answer that one, yeah?
Yes. Article 12 is involving school vehicle.
I'll answer that one if there's any questions, and I'll touch base with you prior.
Article 13 is school equipment expendable, that's fun.
I'll do that one too, if you want.
And article 14 is school technology.
Joe, you're on technology, yeah.
And that would bring us to petition, and, and again, I would, I don't know who the petitioners are, so I'll just say, is there anyone that would like to present on article 15, and we'll do those one at a time.
Um, I have a question, though, like 16 is face coverings, and they're already. Option, so can I make a motion to pass over 16?
You can make a motion pass over or lay on the table, lay on the table would be, we just place on the.
Which do you prefer, pass over or lay on the table?
I don't think they're both interchangeable.
Pass over, I'm not laying on the table, no. We'll stick with pass over.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass over and then, because it's kind of, we appointed this.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
On the face covering, it's not, as I understand, it's not on the point that it will carry over into the rest of the school year, so if you want to reinstate masks, you, this wouldn't allow you to do that, unless there's a separate vote. So that face covering stays forever until there's another vote for action.
I see what you're saying. So.
Well, I think what he's saying is that.
If, yeah, right.
Say, two years from now, there's a pandemic, and.
We couldn't mask anybody if they voted on this, so, and, and once a petitioner has made their presentation, then.
And that's mine, by the way.
I will get up on the other side and say, just realized that. You can't put any masks on any kids ever until we. That's the second option. I guess, we'll keep it, um, but then on 19 and 20.
If we can just stop at 17 for a moment, my plan with article 17 is move it to the beginning of the meeting, and so we'll actually address that, open the polls for an hour, and then continue on with our business while the polls are open.
Gotcha.
18 too. 18 also, we originally thought it was supposed to be on the official ballot.
Right.
But the law changed in 2020.
Oh, okay.
And it's now open.
It's now in the evening business.
It's an SB two.
Yeah.
Yeah, the SB two.
So those votes have to be secret ballot, they vote a secret ballot, open for an hour.
Is it?
Three fits.
So I. Probably makes sense to have both of those at the beginning.
Yeah.
Absolutely, because what we'll do is open the polls after, it looks like most everybody has voted, we'll continue our meeting, even though polls are still open, and so anybody could vote during that hour.
Okay. And then 19 and 20, if 19 passes and is approved, I will make a motion to skip over 20, because they're redundant.
Right.
And if it is not approved, we'll let them vote on a second time.
Okay. 21 and then 22, and then. To transact any other business that may legally come before the board, off the next time, where someone from the school might recognize staff that might be leaving, and it sounds like we have a few. Be a good time for.
Yeah, somebody will at some point, and I'll let you figure that out. Yeah. Excellent. Robert, thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
One of the last articles was, any other business, I want to, the school board just remind the community or inform the community about the high school H-bac. It's in the memo, so you'd be able to.
Yeah. I saw that, so just sort of, we're just sort of saying, you know, on the horizon.
Yes. Because of the grant fudge, we see. The amount of grant funds, the amount, and.
And recognition of any, who do we have retiring? So, wait, something should be said there.
I'd like to publicly say thank you, Rob, you do a fantastic job.
Yeah.
Very mighty work. I think you do an awesome job.
He's really good at shutting me up with that three minutes of. Yeah, have you recovered?
I think so.
Yeah.
And actually, it was, there were a few humorous parts last night, so that was great.
Yeah.
All right, well, you have anything else you need us for?
I don't.
Thank you very much for committing.
Thanks, I appreciate your time.
So you mentioned the high school track system, that's on the agenda as well. We have some information about it, or just generally talk about.
We're trying to schedule a meeting with Wayne Philly and to get an update on where she's at, but our plan, again, that. Memo, back in October, we talked about this, because we're gonna put it off for a year to get to the elementary school H-bac, but to talk to the voters about it, so that we know that we are working on this project, we have some grant funds, but it's probably gonna require additional funds.
That's, and we can certainly bring that up at the meeting, just sort of like.
Yeah.
You know, this is an ongoing conversation, and I know that the elementary H-bac was a lengthy, multi-year discussion process, and we don't have that kind of time with the, with the grant fund, so.
Extended by 2024, so.
We can invite the community to participate whenever they see that on the board agenda. So that everyone feels informed about, you know, where things end up. Okay, recognition of public participation, we have the students, that's any more here. We have a staff member that's. And at this point, we'll open it up to comments from the community, is anyone, community members that have any.
Anybody out there on the street?
Okay. Hearing none, we will.
Are we going to?
Great, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask, just a quick question, I.
No, Joe, I said adjourn.
Where's the cattle?
I just don't know how, uh. Can I ask a question just about a position without going into non-public?
How vague is it?
I could be, I could be extremely vague.
Be extremely vague.
Do we, do we not have a nurse?
The question was, do, do we have a nurse?
Yeah, that's good in the rumor mill, that we, no longer have a nurse?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so strictly rumor mill.
Okay.
Right, but.
So that's why I wanted to go into non-public, but.
Maybe if you have more specific questions, then we should. Have a non-public, just a brief one.
Do you feel there's something we need to know?
I think, if we're going to not, I can give you one sentence, I don't know if that's fine.
Okay.
I, I guess I have something on that topic too, yeah.
Okay, so I guess then I'll pull the board to go into non-public.
Before we do that, I just want to, I know last week, stop. Okay, now I have several. No, I had said at the last meeting that, and I said it to Deb, I think, that we have to have a quorum for voting, that's only for towns, the school doesn't have to have that. So, I, yeah, because I was like, no, I know we do, well, at the town level, we have to, so that's why I was so adamant that we do, and I'm like, Robert, don't we, and he's like, for some weird reason, they make the towns do it. Right, you have to have a board forum the whole time, but school districts do not have to, so I was way wrong, about one time ever.
You're all invited to that as well.
Can I just make a clarification point, too, the school voting, school is open that day, because the voting's two to six.
Yeah.
It was the town voting that school was closed.
Yeah.
Because the voting was here all day.
Okay.
Just.
So on the 24th, the school will be open.
Yeah, and that's another requirement, the town has to have so many hours of voting in the school, and they have so many, so it works, yeah. I'm telling you, yeah, and then, I'm just kidding.
Okay, now I will pull the board to go to non-public pursuant to RSA 9183, discussions of matters that may adversely affect the reputation of a person, I'm gonna go with the board, Joe. Ashley.
Yes.
Jasmine.
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you all for coming.